May 18, 2023, meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. I am Chair Noah Levy. Thanks for being here tonight, all you folks out there in the audience. Before we get started, I just want to remind you as usual that the first two pages of our agenda have the information about how you can participate or watch this meeting If you do want to participate and you're at a computer, the best way to do that is by Zoom. The Zoom link is on the very top of the agenda, page one. Information about how to participate is on page two. You can also, of course, participate by phone. Please note that if you are watching on the humboldt-ledgestar.com website, which has a live stream of the meeting, and planning to call in, that feed runs about a minute behind real time, so make sure that you call just a little bit sooner than you might otherwise if you were on the live stream. But the Zoom live stream, of course, is in real time. Okay. And with that, I would invite you to join me in a salute to the flag.
I would like to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And Laura, could we please have a roll call attendance?
Commissioner Scavdal.
Present.
Commissioner Levy.
Present.
Commissioner Landry. Commissioner Mulder.
Present.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Present.
Commissioner West.
Okay, we have a quorum, five out of seven. And that brings us to item C on the agenda, which is agenda modifications. I'll just ask the director, do we have any modifications to the printed agenda?
Yes, Chair, we do. And I apologize for this first one. Item H, Planning Commission Procedures, we went through last time. That's a holdover, so that is not something that will be done tonight.
Okay.
And then on your dais, there are three supplementals. The first supplemental is for Lost Creek Farms, and that's the PLN 80820. The second supplemental is also for Lost Creek Farms, but that's for 10821. Then there are two supplementals for the Cooks Valley Events applications. We are also presenting tonight the conditions of approval, I believe it's for Matiel. Inadvertently, the wrong conditions were attached as attachment 2C.
Right.
So the conditions between the two permits are nearly identical. We will walk through the differences tonight on the screen.
Great. Okay, thanks so much for clarifying that. Okay. That brings us to item D, which is public comment on non-agenda items. This is the opportunity for anyone either in the room, or on Zoom, or on the phone, to comment on a matter pertaining to the Planning Commission's jurisdiction, which is not an item already on the agenda tonight. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Thank you. Appreciate seeing you. My name is Michael Green. I'm the District Four Supervisor from the County of Lake. I'm up here today for some government business. And I'm kind of weird, so I got excited to see the Planning Commission agenda. I'm a recovering Planning Commissioner myself, from the city of Lakeport, before I joined the City Council there, and I joined the board in October. Your job is not easy. It gets technical, it gets wonky, and you normally bounce between empty rooms and packed chambers, and there's not normally a lot of middle ground in that. So I just wanted to introduce myself, and thank you for your service, and thank you also to Cliff and staff I've already met with today. I'm learning a lot on this trip, and I hope to learn a little bit tonight. And if I don't, I may go get some fish. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, sir. Thanks for your service. Anyone else wishing to comment on a matter that's not on our agenda tonight? Seeing no hands in the room and no hands on Zoom, we will close that item and move on to item E, which is the consent agenda. As usual, I'll go through the consent agenda items and see if anyone in the audience or commissioners wish to pull an item from consent for discussion or questions. So the first item is review and approval of the May 4, 2023 action summary.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to note that I provided a clerical and not substantive in nature correction already to staff, so this will be as amended.
Sure. Can you just briefly summarize what that correction was?
It indicated, or it duplicated the roll call at a time that didn't reflect when members actually joined the meeting.
Sure. Okay, thanks so much for that correction. I think we can leave that on consent, then. Item number two is Benbow Properties zoning reclassification. This is an item that's actually, we're just continuing it to the July 20 meeting, so we're not voting to approve that tonight. Anyone wish to comment on the continuance? Nope? Okay. Item three, Rock and Sky LLC, general plan amendment and zoning reclassification is similarly being continued to the July 20 meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to comment simply on the continuance? Item four is McKennie Zone Reclassification and Conditional Use Permit in the Fortuna-Ronerville area. This item also is being, just being continued to a date uncertain. If anyone wished to comment on that, you could do so. Okay. And then two more related projects are on consent, listed separately. The first is Lost Creek Farms LLC in the Honeydew area. That's a conditional use permit and special permit. This is for a successor parcel ending in 006. Did anyone wish to pull this one for discussion or questions?
Yes.
Okay, we will pull that. And the sixth and last item on consent is Lost Creek Farms LLC in the Honeydew area. This is the parcel ending in 008. We'll also pull that. Okay. That's it for consent, so I would welcome a motion on items one through four on the consent calendar.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move item one as amended and items two through four on the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Mitchell, seconded by Commissioner Mulder. Could we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Mulder?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Scavdal?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Items one through four are approved or moved forward or continued as recommended. Well, then, before we get to the public hearing on the Cook Valley Events, we will take the items pulled from consent. That's item F on the agenda. We have these two related items, the Lost Creek Farms. I would invite a staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good evening, Commissioners, members of the viewing and listening public. My name is Devin Sutphin, Associate Planner, presenting for the department this evening. As we mentioned, we've got a pair of Lost Creek Farms LLC projects for you. Laura, sorry, I jumped ahead. Do you happen to have the presentation? We can throw it up up here, either way.
It's coming up.
Okay, thank you.
Can you use your control?
Mm-hmm.
It's not on.
All right, thank you, Laura. So, we've got two projects. They're very similar projects. They're adjacent. First project is going to be for 11,800 square feet total pre-existing, and that's a combination of 10,800 square feet mixed light and 1,000 square feet outdoor. The second is just for 10,800 square feet of pre-existing mixed light. Both projects each contain a special permit for the setback reduction to federal lands, federal and state lands. So, the project is in the Honeydew area. Both, sorry, both parcels are zoned unclassified. Both of them have a general plan designation of residential agriculture, and they have a minimum parcel size in that area of 40 acres. So, the map in the upper right corner depicts publicly-owned land, so the two parcels in question are circled in red, and then the rest of the green lands to the north is California state parks, and every, all the green parcels to the south are Bureau of Land Management lands. So here we've got the access route for the site. It's got 2.8 miles of privately maintained roads. The roads have been assessed by a licensed engineer to meet or exceed Category 4 road standards or equivalent. So we've got our cultivation area verification. This image is from Google Earth, May of 2014. We've got two large mixed light greenhouses, and then one outdoor area of approximately 1,000 square feet. The second image here is the next parcel, another Google Earth image from September of 2015 that shows three large mixed light greenhouses. And then there's actually one small mixed light greenhouse. It's in the upper left corner, right next to one of the red-roofed buildings. So, processing is going to occur onsite in a structural-labeled pagoda. We'll look at the staff or the site plan here in just a moment. That's, that, processing onsite, at least packaging and trimming, will require a commercial building permit to be issued within two years of approval. They've got an alternative. If that's not achievable, they can trim and package offsite and just dry and cure onsite. Propagation's going to be limited to 10% or less of the cultivation area of both sites, but it is going to be located on the northern parcel. Sorry, thank you, Commissioner. So propagation is going to be limited to 10% or less, and then it's going to be on the northern parcel. So, we're going to have a maximum of three seasonal employees in addition to the operators, and that's just during peak operations. Power is currently provided by solar and generators. Grant funding has been secured by the applicant to increase the solar and battery capacity, and we've added a project condition to ensure that the project is converted from generator and relies more on the solar and battery primarily by January 1, 2026. So next, we've got the pair of site plans. This first one is the southern project. We've got two respective cultivation areas on the east and the west. Right underneath the Panther Gap sign or label is the processing building, the pagoda. And this is the southern of the parcel. You can even make out some of the structures on the north. We're going to look at the northern parcel now. Kind of really similar setup. This is the site that'll have propagation on it, and then we just have two discrete cultivation areas. So, water. The water budget for both projects is approximately 110,000 gallons. That equates to about nine gallons per square foot. Irrigation water is sourced from groundwater wells, and both of the wells, one on each respective property, has been assessed by a licensed engineering geologist to be isolated from surface water and nearby water sources like wells or springs. Both sites have really similar current water storage. They have 25,000 gallons between bladders and hard-sided tanks. Again, we've got, the applicant has secured grant funding to increase the storage by about 50,000 gallons for a total of 70,000 gallons. They're also in that process with that grant, going to add rain catchment, and so that'll allow them to store rainwater to offset the use of the well. So, we do have some sensitive resources nearby. Nearest Northern Spotted Owl sighting is less than a half a mile away. Nearest activity center is just under a mile and a half away. These were from 1995 and 1998, but regardless of the age of the sightings, and due to the proximity of federal and state-maintained lands, each respective agency's resource management plans as well, we assume the presence of Northern Spotted Owl and have conditioned the project accordingly. So we've got noise and light attenuation measures, requirements for waste management, the prohibition of anticoagulant rodenticides, and then further, no generator use is allowed until the applicant can demonstrate that it operates at or below the 50 decibels at 100-foot threshold, or the nearest forested edge, whichever of those two happens to be closer. And similarly, lighting is not allowed until staff can verify that the artificial lighting in both the greenhouses and the propagation meets International Dark Sky Association standards. So, we wanted to kind of cover the supplemental that we provided. We realized very recently that there was a mistake in the staff report. First, the resolution that we're asking you all to approve this evening is correct. There's no, there are no changes to the existing resolution. We incorrectly indicated that the archaeological survey was conducted by Nick Angeloff, but it was actually conducted by Roscoe. We incorrectly put in that there were some either sensual, sensitive cultural or historic resources found on site, and that is not the case here. Roscoe recommended inadvertent discovery protocol for the project. So, in summary, we're recommending that the commission make the required findings, adopt the resolution, approving the special conditional use permits and special permits for these projects. That concludes my presentation, and we're available for questions.
So, the Chair, if you don't mind, real quick, just want to add, we actually did not provide a supplemental to you, as Mr. Sutphin mentioned. He did, I don't think we did. Did we provide the supplemental?
Well, there's the maps.
Okay, but regarding the corrections, I don't think that is in the supplemental. We realized that late yesterday and didn't want to provide a supplemental after the noon deadline, so just wanted to point that out to you.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. We will open this up for public comment in a moment, but are there any questions from Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Mitchell?
So, I noted you discussed several areas in which the two project may be sharing certain features or facilities. Can you walk us through between the water sourcing, the propagation area, and the access point? Any shared facilities among the two projects?
Thank you. I'll issue the response to the Chair, of course. So, for water resources, essentially, there's two separate wells. Each one of them has their own hydrologic analysis, and has been determined by the author to be hydrologically disconnected. The propagation, so-
Can we look at the site plan, so you can point that out, so everybody can see it?
Yeah. Okay, here we go. I'm honestly not sure exactly where the wells are on each respective property. I believe that the, I know the applicant is here, and I know that she can articulate exactly where they're at pretty promptly. Are we concerned about where the wells are, or more about where the storage is, or both?
Both.
If you all wouldn't mind, I'm going to actually look at a physical copy of the site plan, and that may help me see a little bit better.
Yeah, it may be easier to make that out, so, sure, take a moment.
Thank you, Commissioner. Sorry about the delay there. So, basically, they're, both of the wells are on the right sides of the parcel, so to kind of tune you in, we're going to go to the east side of the parcel. We're going to go to that southern greenhouse. Just southeast of where that greenhouse is, is where the well is. The small square that's just north of that greenhouse on the east side, thank you, Laura, she's pointing out the well right there. I know this has a laser, but it won't show up on that screen. And so just above where, just north of or above where Laura was pointing that square, that's just above it, would be the water storage. It's both the bladders and the tanks. The other side is very similar. So, again, if we kind of tune you into the eastern cultivation area, there's two greenhouses there, and then there's a small square to the left, and that is the water storage. And the well is actually the small rectangle that's to the east of the northernmost greenhouse on the east side of the parcel. So I think we've covered water storage. Propagation is on, I believe, the northern of the two parcels. Yeah, the applicant just confirmed that if we're, we're going to, the greenhouse for cultivation, or, sorry, propagation is on the west side. If we look at the cultivation on the west, we see the red roof. It's the greenhouse that's immediately south of it. So it's the northernmost greenhouse on the west side of the, west side of the site plan. That's perfect, Laura. Yes, ma'am? The- And then the access points, we're going to go back to this. Come back here. There we go. So, the red rectangle is basically the two parcels, the subject parcels, and to the best of my understanding, the access is taken through the northern parcel, and then the two of them are conjoined, essentially. They share a parcel line. So I think we've answered your questions. Let me know otherwise, please.
Thank you.
Another question.
Okay.
There were some concern raised about dogs, and obviously, if there's residents on site, you know, we don't police dogs, but can you talk about what, if any, way we responded to the comment about dogs as it relates to wildlife?
Sure, I'll try to tackle that one through the Chair. So, state parks did raise concern about dogs related to the cannabis operation, and what, we responded to state parks to let them know that dogs are not part of their security plan. There's nothing in their operations plan that mentions the use of dogs, and so we did not feel that it was something that we would limit, because, as you mentioned, there are residences in the area, and there would be no such prohibition on residences having dogs. I think our concern also was that it, because there isn't, no, there are no dogs associated with their operations plan, it would be very difficult for us to enforce such a restriction, given the residences on the property.
Okay, and I think the last question I have relates to the fact that this is two separate permits, but we have several shared facilities, meaning the propagation area and the access point. In the past, we've done something to tie them together, either through requiring easements and for them to come back if one of them sells to a different owner. What would be the most expedient way to make sure that if one were to sell to a separate owner, that we'd still have adequate propagation, considering we're giving, they're roughly the same size, but we're giving what would be 20% propagation area to the north parcel and none to the bottom?
Right, that's a good question. So, we didn't think there is, there is an easement for access over the parcel, so I think we already feel that that's covered. And obviously, they can stand alone for their use of water. As far as the propagation, I do think if we don't have that in there, that is a good condition to add, that should they become, transferred to different owners, that they reduce the cultivation area on that parcel to no more than 10% of the cultivation on that parcel. And I think that could easily be developed into a condition.
Thank you. Any further questions for staff before we get, yep, Commissioner Mulder?
Through the Chair, I just want to, the loose dog thing. Is it, so since the abatement process has come about, is there parcels within the county, even such as in this area, that have been abandoned by property owners?
I don't know that we have good information on that.
Okay. I guess where I was trying to go is trying to bring up the light that there are more abandoned wild, or abandoned dogs in different neighborhoods, because people are just up and walking away from properties. So, I was just trying to, just because a governmental agency commented about a potential problem, wanted to make sure we weren't looking, or make sure that we are looking at all potential contributors to that problem.
Okay. Commissioner Scavdal?
Yeah, just wanted to make a comment on the, on one of the wells, and I noted that the engineering geologist did note that they're not hydraulically connected to surface waters, which is, which is good. He also made a comment about a potential error in the, in the drawdown, the well drawdown report. And the well on parcel 006, and it's probably more for the applicant's information, may want to verify, but it lists the estimated yield at 20 gallons per minute, and the drawdown at 200 feet in a 200-foot well. That can't both be true. So, either the well produces 20 gallons a minute and the drawdown is much less, or they overpump the well and drew it all the way down to 200 feet. So, you might want to actually verify what your well yield is in that well. So, just note that it can't, it can't both be correct.
Yeah, if I could, through the Chair, one of the things that we've come to understand recently is that the drawdown depth that is listed on some of these well completion reports by a specific well driller is not actually the same thing that the geologist is thinking would be the drawdown at the maximum, you know, during the pump test. It had to do with something different, and I can't exactly explain it right now, but we did have this conversation with the well driller, and he was indicating that that's not actually what he meant by listing it as a drawdown, which obviously has confused us as well. But we'd be happy to bring back some more information about that, though.
Yeah, I don't have a concern. I think there's adequate water available for the project, and it's, again, it's not hydraulically connected, so I don't really have a concern there. I just wanted to make note and make sure the applicant was aware. There might be a discrepancy there on that well drillers report.
Okay, thanks for that. If there's no other questions at this time, I do want to open this item for public comment, beginning with- beginning with inviting the applicants, if they wish, to come up first. You would not be limited to three minutes. You could make a longer presentation and address any issues that you feel were not covered in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioners. Bjorn Zep with Rain and Zep, we're the agent for the project. The family that is running the projects are, is here today and appreciates your consideration. And we're available, of course, for any questions. Wanted to make a couple of quick notes on the dog issue. The, the family doesn't actually own any dogs. The dogs aren't, dogs aren't a part of this project. We obviously wouldn't want to have a condition prohibiting them from ever getting a puppy, but that it isn't a current issue on this project at the moment. And as the Commissioner mentioned, I think there's, Commissioner Scabdal mentioned, there's adequate water on each project, on each project. So we didn't really see a necessity for a water easement or anything of that, that nature. And in the event that either of these projects were to sell, it would necessarily precipitate an amendment to the project, which would bring us back before you all. And so I just wanted to point that out, that there's already in the system built in a way to address that, that concern. Other than that, I just appreciate your consideration and let us know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Okay. Well, I'm, this item is open for public comment, and I would invite, if, if anyone else in the audience or on Zoom wishes to comment on this item, now would be the moment to do that. Not seeing any, so I will close the public comment part of this item and bring it back to the Commission for further discussion or questions.
Is it appropriate to make a motion on both projects since we heard a combined presentation?
Yes.
Okay, then I would like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution, which does the following. Finds that the Planning Commission has considered a, considered the mid deck for the CMMLUO and the addendum prepared for the Lost Creek Farms LLC projects, and finds the proposed projects comply with the general plan and zoning ordinance, and approves the conditional use permit and special permit subject to the recommended conditions of approval with two requested modifications. The first modification would be only for the north parcel, and that would be a condition that we talked about, bringing back to staff planners to reduce the cultivation area to 10% of the then cultivation area if the properties were to be held under separate ownerships. And number two, in light of the requests for the reduced setback and the comments and other conditions that we've added with regards to the proximity of wildlife, I'd also like to add a condition to both projects that the use of mono, mono filament netting would not be permitted.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Mitchell, seconded by Commissioner O'Neill. Director?
Clarification on the motion. The Commissioner Mitchell said reduction in cultivation area. That was reduction in propagation area.
Yes, yes. Okay, the reduction in propagation area to, to correspond to the reduction in...
In the combined total.
Combined.
Yep.
Cultivation, yes.
I have a question. Does it have to come back, or can that not just be written in there that it's an automatic?
It's an automatic.
Yeah, so it wouldn't have to come back and get approval again? It's just that they can have up to 10%?
Correct.
Either in both, one place or?
So if, that would be a friendly, maybe a friendly amendment to the motion to include that performance standard, that the cultivation area be limited to 10%? Either cumulatively for both parcels or individually for each parcel?
That's acceptable to the motion maker?
Okay, and me too.
Yeah, I'll just comment that the, that the agent for this project indicated that it was, if I understood him, intended that the projects could be, would be amended if they were ever sold and owned separately. But it's, and I may have misunderstood you, sir, but it is our wish to make these project approvals stand alone so that they don't need to be amended if they were to be split. And I think that's what we're trying to do here, so. I, I do normally ask if there's questions, but before we vote on the motion, yes. Commissioner Mulder?
As far as it coming back as like an amendment, the way I seen it, if the projects were ever split, that it would have to possibly have an amend, amendment or modification because shared resources like drying, there is that one building on the one parcel. So that's what I seen if possib, if, you know. But that's neither here nor there. The added condition about the mono filament netting, I'm just trying to figure out what information we were supporting those, that condition with. Because I, I mean, there's public lands close by, but I haven't seen, I didn't read through, and I very well could have missed it as far as wildlife going through the property and the cultivation areas that could potentially be entrapped. And maybe I missed it, so I'm just trying to figure out what page that would be on so that way I could just skim through that real quick.
Well, this is something that I've added to a number of projects based on the fact of their proximity to lands that are filled with creatures. And I personally witnessed a number of deer entangled in mono filament netting. And it's, it's not based on a specific page, but the language in my motion certainly lends itself to an additional finding that we're granting the subjective reduction in the setback to the wildlands and based on the fact that we were requested to disallow the use of the specific rodenticides that pose problems with wildlife. That would be the basis on which I added that.
Okay, thank you for that. I'm, I'm going to support the project. I agree to disagree as far as, but I respect your explanation, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
I do just have one question. It's a fairly small detail, but I just, before we vote on this motion, I want to make sure this is not a, an error that needs to be corrected. I noted a slight inconsistency in the staff reports. I admit, I, I did not track down to see whether it is the same in the respective conditions of approval. But in the, because these are so, so similar, almost identical in, in most respects, including the fact that both have a mix of solar and generator power and have a grant that will allow them to eliminate the generator. But in the case of the first item, the item listed first, the staff report says at the bottom of page, let me just make sure this is the, yeah, this is the assessed parcel ending in 006. And near the bottom of page four, it says that with the goal of eliminating generator power except for emergency backup by 1231 2024. So the end of 2024, or January 1st 25, whichever. However, the other project specifies that, that it would be eliminating the generator by January 1st 2026. So there is a year discrepancy there. I just wondered if that was a typo, or if that was in fact the case that we were conditioning the two differently? And as I say, I'm actually looking, going off the staff reports, I'm not sure that, what the corresponding conditions say on this point.
Sure, so that looks like that was a typo in the staff report. Condition of approval number nine is where you'll find the condition about changing to solar, and it does reference it. Looks like by the end of 2026?
Chair Levy, you mentioned that you were looking at the parcel that ended in six. Is that correct?
Looking at the staff report for the parcel ending in six.
Page four.
Page four, bottom of page four.
So what I'm seeing here is that condition of approval number nine requires them to transition to 80% renewable energy sources by the end of 2026. And that might be appropriate to add that as a correction as well. To be January, by January 1st of 2026, which I think was the intention.
The intention was for both of them to be transitioned by January 1st 2026.
That's correct.
Is that in fact what the corresponding condition for the other project says? Just looking that up now. Okay, so both of these actually in the, in the COAs do say end of 26. That's not outside the range which we have granted, but I just wanted to be clear what, what we were intending to condition.
So both of them do say by the end of 2026. It, it's basically been our practice, and I believe the practice of the Planning Commission, to require that by the beginning of 2026, so January 1st 2026. That would be more consistent with past approach.
Well, then I would make a friendly amendment to the motion.
That it's acceptable.
That we adjust condition nine and condition seven, respectively, of these two projects to, instead of the end of 2026, to say January 1st 2026.
And can I just take a moment to, to thank the applicant for going ahead and getting the grant funding so that you could get onto solar? We think that's really important, and we...
I don't like, you know, bringing fossil fuel up there either, so.
We commend you in your efforts.
Great, and likewise with the grant that you got to add water storage and rainwater catchment. You, you appear to be doing all that you can to minimize your impact, so, thank you. Okay, so we do have a motion and a second, and a couple of, and the, and the motion maker has accepted a couple of slight amendments to that motion. Are we clear on what the motion is? Okay, then could we go ahead and have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mulder?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Scabdal?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. And the two Lost Creek Farm projects are approved as condition. Okay. That brings us to the public hearing section. We have one public hearing concerning a couple of different permit, permits listed together under Cooks Valley Events. And I would invite the staff to present a staff report whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Chair. Steve Lazar, we're getting that up right now. You're correct, this is two projects that are being brought before you for separate action, but will be presented together. The staff report for the projects was a combined staff report. And so we're going to talk through the projects collectively. And if we can get that up, is that shared right now? Okay, great. Let's see if I got anything up right here. Turn it on. So the, you can see the two project numbers there. Twenty, the Northern Knights Music Group LLC is one of the applicants, and the Material Community Center is the other. There's two use permits, two modifications to the use permits. Both use permit modifications, one of the key features would be to renew the use permits for a extended term from 2023 through 2027. That's one of the objectives. This slide just shows what Northern Knights looked like in 2022. And this is one of the events that is under the use permits. And you're looking at the county line, the bridge over the South Fork, and the Cooks Valley area in the foreground. The next slide is a photo of Reggae on the River at French's Camp in 2015. Reggae on the River has not occurred at French's Camp since 2018, and it won't be occurring into the future under the proposal before you tonight. This slide is showing kind of a variety of different ownerships and the sort of relationship to each other. And I want to spend a little time going through this because it is helpful. We're going to talk through the history on this. Some of the Commissioners may be unfamiliar with these permits. They go back a great many years. So what you see in yellow is what was now referred to as a County Line Ranch, was formerly the Dimick Ranch. In green is the Cooks Valley Campground, property owned by the Bowman's. In gray is French's Camp, or the, owned by the Arthur family. And then the parcels you see that are kind of to the left side of the slide, the Richardson Grove Campground and RV Park, the One Log House and the Grandfather Tree. Those are parcels that kind of serve as auxiliary facilities in the proposal before you tonight. And then you can see the Mendocino and Hubble County Line, which divides the County Line Ranch and a small portion of the Bowman Holdings. So this slide kind of focuses on the venue areas that are the subject of the permits. Both parcels are used during the Northern Knights event historically for both camping and, and parking. And the main stage for Northern Knights occurs on the Bowman property, but stages occur elsewhere as well. The, the transition that the Material is looking to do is to kind of consolidate the event activities within the Cooks Valley area and away from the, the French's Campsite. Looking here, you can see the auxiliary parking, camping, and support areas. Once again, we have kind of the, the One Log House here. This serves as sort of a location for both the dispensary, distribution facilities that are a part of the cannabis special event. Also a will call area. The Grandfather Tree also works in that capacity. And then the Richardson Grove RV Parking Campground can be auxiliary parking. And then lastly, the French's Camp here on the west side of the river is available for auxiliary parking as well. This is sort of a vicinity map, just to kind of contextualize this area as it relates to neighboring holdings. So to the west, so the green here, you see on the right side of the slide, those are the areas that have historically been under permit and are under the permits tonight. The Richardson Grove Holdings is in purple. And then to the west, the furthest west, is the Benbow State Recreation Area. So you can see there are several state-owned parks in the vicinity. As such, we, we wanted to make sure to deal with wildlife and get more up to date on biological concerns. And there's been a biological analysis done as part of the environmental document. And we have been in consultation with CDFW and State Parks. And then these, the next series of slides is kind of to walk you through sort of the evolution of the permits. And so here you can see the, this would be the County Line Ranch, kind of non-Bowman, just using the County Line Ranch exclusively for events. Then these are sort of areas that expand, the expanded event footprint, that kind of is what Northern Knights would utilize and what Reggae might utilize if it were to operate into the years ahead under the modification. And then here, we see the auxiliary facilities and how they relate. And then lastly, this slide is showing kind of where the French's Campsite was occupied during prior permitting and events. And then here, I think we can see kind of what that looks like on the 2018 satellite. So you can see how that site was used. None of this area on the east side of the river is proposed to be used. That's one of the reasons why agencies are supportive of this project. That's one of the reasons why agencies are supportive of this project because it takes away the, the need for the seasonal bridge that was kind of installed right in this area here. And that was a major challenge for the Maitil and resulted in a lot of expense and complication, which is part of the reason they're looking to, to migrate to the Cooks Valley site. So thinking through the kind of evolution of the permits, I want to go through some milestones in the permit history because it does track back a great ways. So the original permitting occurred in 1993 and environmental impact report was prepared at that time. It was largely focused on the French's Camp site. It was renewed in, in 1997. There was permits in 93, 98 and 2005, but mostly surrounding the French's Camp site. Then there was a change in 2006 where there was a shift of the concert venue to the Dimmick Ranch, keeping the French's Camp property for auxiliary parking and camping, but not making it the place where the main musical events occurred. And then you may have heard, there was a bit of a conflict between the permissions of the property owner, the Dimmicks and the Maitil and it resulted in there being a kind of dispossession of the permit from the original applicant. And, and I got a little ahead of myself. There was an addition of a one-day event to the permit in 2009 and, and I should say, I'm not trying to get too into the environmental documents, but I have a slide ahead. But know that when these events occurred, there is usually a supplemental environmental impact report or an addendum to one of those. And so there's been a lot of iterations there. So the Maitil original permit from French's Camp kind of morphed and went to the Dimmick Ranch site. It added an additional event, a one-day event that was Willie Nelson concert at one point. Then the Maitil went back through to get permitted again at French's Camp. And that's what you see the permit here and that was in 2013. A new supplemental EIR was done at that time to permit essentially dual events by dual applicants. That's the paradigm we're kind of living with now that we're modifying. And then what would happen in 2016, 2014, there was a change in the ownership of the Dimmick Ranch. The Northern Knights group took over control of the permit and morphed the permit into the Electronic Festival where it was mostly focused on the Bowman property with permission through the county of Mendocino, but using the, the Humboldt side of the line for auxiliary parking and camping. And so the last thing that happened was last year, we changed the Reggae on the River permit, which was the source, the, the Maitil permit, the, the 2012 permit. We morphed it into a two-event permit instead of a one-event permit and only one of those events occurred last year, but the Summer Arts and Music Festival was that event. So here we are today. We have two permits, mostly focused on the same geographical area, but two different applicants. And then this is sort of a table summarizing kind of what that looks like in terms of the magnitude of the events, the amount of people, the amount of vehicles and the number of days. So you can see Northern Knights, it can be anywhere from three or four days. There's also the, a two-day event that they're asking for permission for. And then with the Maitil Community Center, they're looking for a two-day event for Summer Arts and Music Festival and the three-day event for Reggae on the River, something like that. And then the attendance levels you can see track. Just important to note that, you know, it wasn't as though this area had never seen development prior to the, the actual events. There's been use of the Cooks Valley area and French's Camp for a lot of years, way back into the past. So it's important to keep that in mind. This is not a new disturbance of the property.
That's a cool slide.
Yeah, and, and these, these are from a book called The Traveling the Redwood Highway. It was put out by Diane Hock and it has lots of different tourist stops along the way. So the, um, the, now I'm gonna kind of summarize what the existing permits allow. The, the existing permit for the Northern Knights Music Group, which is now expired but is seeking renewal, it allows for 8,000 people during a three or four-day event and auxiliary parking associated with that. And that event usually happens at the third weekend in July and it also allows a one-day event of up to 3,000 people on either Labor Day or July 4th weekend. So that's what the current allowance under the permit is. What they're seeking to do with the modification is to expand the three or four-day event to 10,000 people. They've already received permission from Mendocino County to get to that level. So they're looking to kind of cover it at the, at the Humboldt side. And then they're also seeking to expand the one-day event into a two-day event and allow for up to 5,000 people. With the Reggae on the River or the Maitil permit, the last two events authorized as we just kind of covered was Summer Arts and Music Festival and the Harvest Hangout. Only one of those occurred. Allows daily music from 10:00 AM to midnight. Cannabis sales and consumption areas were allowed and there was a daily attendance limit of 4,000 people. And onsite camping was limited because it was really only using the county line ranch last year, which limited its ability to accommodate camping. So the modification requests are seeking to expand the two-day event attendance to 5,000 people and to allow for the three-day event, Reggae on the River or something like that, to have 8,000 persons and also to increase onsite camping. And the way they get to that is through the use of both properties, the county line ranch and the Cooks Valley. I'm not gonna get too into these details, but these are event maps. We, we tried to get the applicants to not get too specific about locations of facilities because we didn't want to have to trigger modifications every time the event configuration was modified. And we kept that in mind when we did our site visits with CDFW so that they understood that all the domesticated areas could be a camping area, it could be a parking area, it could be a vent, you know, concessions area, but was there a real issue if it was any of those or were they all okay? And that, and I think we were successful in doing that. So there's kind of a, a broadness to the way these are done. These are, this is an event map for Reggae on the River. You can see it shows the use of both the Bowman property and the Cooks Valley, or the county line ranch. And then here's an example of the Northern Knights with camping areas in blue, parking areas in yellow. And then this is showing kind of in perspective, the auxiliary areas we talked about earlier. One thing that's come up in some of the public comments we've received is, is concerned about the, the noise and the, in particular for wildlife concerns. The stage locations vary throughout the events between the applicants, but generally the, the goal is to, to point the stages away from Richardson Grove and from the, and, and that's achievable on the, on the northern parcel, on the county line ranch. It's a little more difficult on the southern property because if you, if you look on this slide here, a stage location is kind of down in this area and it's already built and faces north and it's not in Humboldt County, so we don't really have control over that. So I just wanted to make that clear. That was one of the comments we received. We have coordinated with a number of agencies. We've, we worked pretty closely with CDFW in preparing the environmental document and a lot of their suggestions were incorporated into mitigation measures. This is a little bit about the water supply, which is one of the, I think, principal concerns. The amount of water storage that is existing, the county line ranch, the, the northern property has 110,000 gallons of tank storage. It's being, going to increase in the years to come, but that's the current snapshot. The Cooks Valley Campground has a pond, which I'll show you a slide of in a minute. That pond isn't used for potable water, but it is used for the dust control and fire protection. And, and so there's no storage on the Cooks Valley Campground for potable water, but the, the way that they offset the water use is, is by reducing their water demand in, after the events occur to the tune of however much water was used by the events. And I'll show you a slide that kind of demonstrates that. And even though they are wells, they're really, I, um, essentially linked to the South Fork of the Yale River, given their proximity and depth. So this is an example of what I was talking about. The, this shows baseline water use during years, during the pandemic where there were no events. So this is showing what would happen on this property independent of the projects before you tonight. So the county line ranch used about 307,000 gallons of water during a six-month period, the driest portions of the year. And then the Cooks Valley Campground, the Bowman property, used over a million gallons. So for purposes of our mitigation measures, what we've essentially tried to do is because the Cooks Valley Campground property doesn't have, uh, storage, they don't really have the ability to forbear, but they can reduce use below the baseline levels. So they monitor their usage and then at the end of the season, it needs to stay at that ceiling, which is 1.34 million gallons, basically. So we'll be able to get that in the event reporting. They have the records and have been reporting for quite some time and they have enrolled these with the State Division of Water Rights. This table just shows, uh, storage and it's kind of breakout and event-related water use by event, but I won't spend a lot of time unless we end up focusing on that. But you can see here, the projected amount of potable water use between all events is around 490,000 gallons and we believe that's a fairly conservative estimate. And it is based on real data from past, past events. The permit terms, I think it covered it. They're, they're both expiring as of 2022. They're both seeking renewal. They've kind of gotten there in different ways, but I think we got that earlier in the early slides. So, uh, you know, there are requirements under these permits that there's a post-event community meeting, that there's a monitoring report submitted. And the last time that the Northern Knights permit came before the planning commission, it was in association with a modification to add cannabis events. And that was done in 2019. It normally is administratively reviewed because of their, their track record of successfully holding events. With the Maitil permit, a monitoring report has always been required to go with the planning commission and we believe that's appropriate given that this is kind of a new thing for that group. Even though it's the same site, you know, there's a lot of institutional knowledge that isn't necessarily really shared between both applicants, though they have been doing a good job of working together so far. So we, we believe that you will see this if you were to take action tonight next year with a monitoring report and a decision on whether to set the attendance levels for the following year. That's the way the Maitil permit would work if they approved under the conditions we presented. And the last time it was reviewed, as I mentioned earlier, was in 2022 to kind of divide the Reggae event into two smaller events. So I covered the kind of permitting milestones. This is the accompanying SEQA. There was an EIR done in 1993. There was a mitigated negative declaration done in 1998. There were supplemental EIRs done in association with changes to the permits in 2006, eight and 13. And there's been eight different addendums over the years. So we've done a mitigated negative declaration this time around and the idea that we tried to, we looked through the EIRs and there were no significant effects or impacts that required a statement of overriding consideration. So there wasn't necessarily, necessarily the need to prepare the EIR. You don't always know that until you get to the end of the process. So we think it's appropriate to do the mitigated negative declaration. It's a, it's a simpler approach. And what we tried to do to strive to do is because we're changing and morphing it into a new venue location, discard conditions that are associated with the seasonal bridge and things like that, that are really irrelevant to the current, you know, incarnation and kind of apply new ones that reflect new concerns that have come up, like the kind of proliferation of generators that we witnessed. That, that was an issue that wasn't addressed in the original environmental document and, and incorporate new, you know, feedback from agencies. So that's what we've done. I haven't gone through all the mitigation measures. They're included in the attachments to your report and I can go through them if any of the commissioners are interested. Um, I just wanted to show some site photos from the site visit we did in April. This is the pond that's used for the dust control and fire protection water. It is got a connection to subsurface flow, so it's not a pure rainwater pond, but it's, it's for the most part rainfall that it captures. This is a, the water metering on the Bowman property showing it in, in April. This is the location of the river stage. This is a component in Mendocino County for the Northern Knights permit, but it could be also a component if approved for Reggae on the River and this new incarnation. And then this is water storage on the county line ranch. This, this larger off to the left here, this is the, the 50,000 gallon tank that's been there for some time and these are 5,000 gallon tanks that have been brought on the site. And this is looking back towards French's Camp from the northern portion of the county line ranch property. In the foreground, this would be areas reserved for camping along the river bar. And there are setbacks prescribed from the wetted channel for camping and parking areas. This is the northern stage area that's used in the county line ranch and, and lastly, I want to go over some of the, we've only received one public comment. And it was from a community member, Ed Voice. Sort of summarized the, the concerns raised in the comments. He's, uh, his initial concerns raised were about growth inducing impacts. We've really struggled to see the, the basis for that concern. As far as, and then he, he kind of asked for, he challenges the feasibility or, or the details on some of the mitigation measures. And I've kind of summarized the, the titles here. So the floating boom is a mitigation measure that was implemented as, as a, in, in response of CDFW. The idea is that we have a lot of flotation devices that are used in the river where people are attending these events and, and floating in the water. And it's easy for things to escape and go downstream, so to capture those things before they leave and drift down the South Fork. That was the idea there. There's a pond on the Arthur property. Probably be easier to show on a different slide, but I'll just summarize it for now. The pond was associated with the French's Camp permitting, but ponds, as you know, are an attractive nuisance for bullfrogs. And so we, the CDFW and, and concerns we raised by Mr. Voice actually, didn't want to see the Maitil walk away from this and have it become a habitat for bullfrogs. So the draining of that pond is something that we included as a mitigation measure. I had a conversation with the property owner, even though they're not participating in permitting. They are, it's seeming agreeable to an MOU with the Maitil to allow for them to, to make sure that the pond is dry by September 1st. That's the language of, of a condition that we've included in the supplemental that I'll go over in a minute. The event light show restrictions are things that we've put in as, as response to CDFW comments. Seems quite feasible. They have attachments to the scaffolding above the stages and can be directed. Stage orientation, we went over earlier. Greenhouse gas emissions and VMT reduction measures. We have a suite of different measures that we've included. The idea being that we have a baseline established by the prior events. We'll, we'll reduce those levels below the baseline, but it's going to occur in kind of a, a gradual fashion and that they'll implement measures like encouraging carpooling in the first year, developing better shuttle service, reducing the amount of generator use, incentivizing people to bring battery-powered, you know, power sources. So there's a lot of things that can be brought online. They don't all have to happen in the first year. But we expect that there will be a reduction below the baseline because they're feasible, achievable and, and their commitments that the applicant's willing to, to make. And then lastly, there's a raft of water quality measures from monitoring water use both before, during and after the events. There's water quality sampling required. There's the dust control. We've prohibited the use of dust off. The water for the dust control is from the pond. We saw it earlier. And this is one that was challenged, was the use of ecologically friendly sunblock. We probably shouldn't have included that as a mitigation frankly, because we don't have anything to suggest that there is an impact from sunblock from these events. We have water quality sampling data, but that's a kind of a nuance that we just forgot when we were doing this. So it's, we believe that, that, that it could be more in the realm of a condition than a mitigation measure. So, um, so I can get into more detail on any of these. There's a lot of them. I think lastly, I just want to go through the, uh, there was an issue with the staff report that was provided on Legistar. There was a attachment to one of the resolutions. There's three resolutions that we've provided. One is to, to adopt the environmental document that we prepared for this iteration. Another is to approve the permit for Northern Knights and another is to approve the permit for the Maitil. Each of the resolutions for the approval have conditions of approval attached to the resolution and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. The environmental document resolution has the conditions for a different project attached to it and those should be disregarded. And when we get to making the motion, I would-
Just to be clear, that was attachment to C that you're referring to.
Correct.
For anyone who may have looked at that out there, that, that was the wrong document.
Correct, and it really shouldn't be utilized with it. But the, the other resolutions are intact. I looked at them before the, the hearing tonight. And you did receive a supplemental. The supplemental was to correct some, uh, we, we reversed the language in two conditions. So this top one is a condition for the Maitil and we accidentally used the Northern Knights group. The idea behind this condition is that should there be another situation like what happened with the Dimmick family in the Maitil where the permit is essentially hostile takeover, that it would require the, the applicant to give consent. It couldn't just be operated without their consent. And then the other thing is to deal with the Arthur pond and make it clear that, that the Maitil is the applicant that's responsible for draining that pond because it's a carryover from their permit and the infrastructure that they put on the site. And that was inadvertently excluded from the conditions that were provided with the original staff report. So I believe, uh, this is the last, uh, this is something that was not in the supplemental, but was something we worked with the Maitil on, which is to set an attendance limit for, Northern Knights at this time has an approval from Mendocino County to use the Bowman property for, for however they see fit under the Northern Knights Festival. The Maitil, as far as we know, has not yet secured that. While they're not planning on holding a three-day event this year, we want to make sure that they don't try to hold an event with 8,000 people without having the Bowman property in the mix because they just don't have the carrying capacity with just the Cooks, the county line ranch. So this would essentially impose a restriction that if they're just using Cooks, the, the county line ranch, then a 5,000 cap would be the attendance limit. So we would suggest, should you take action on this tonight to approve it, that you include this as an added condition. And I think that is the end of my presentation. Thanks for bearing with me and I'm happy to get into any questions you have, including mitigation measures that we didn't cover.
Thanks. Yes, I, um, before we get to public comment, I'm actually gonna give us a short break. But before that break, um, we have an opportunity for questions about the staff report we just heard from commissioners. So, did you have one, Commissioner Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I noticed that one of the changes-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I noticed that one of the changes in the Corrections and Additions, Part B, you have the annual report being submitted to the Planning Commission instead of the Planning Director. You know, this event seems like the least planning-y thing we do. Excuse me for inventing a word, but it seems to me that the monitoring, unless we're being asked to change conditions, should be done by either the zoning administrator or the director, to me. But is there, is there a specific rationale behind?
Thanks. Through the chair, yes. You absolutely can choose whether to apply the condition as we've suggested, but the reason we're suggesting that is because, as you can imagine, holding an event of this sort is a complicated affair, and there's only so much we can do. It's sort of just anticipating and trying to corral the issues. It really relies on the, on the, kind of how good of an operator the applicant is in addressing the myriad of concerns. And sometimes, we learn after the permit, with all the best intentions, that they didn't do a very good job. And the only way that we get to actually reconsider that is by bringing it back before you. So, if we don't provide for that avenue, then the only way we do that is through revocation. So, it's a more onerous and difficult process. And the reason we don't have that included with the Northern Knights group is because they do have a pretty solid track record at this point. Going back to the history I covered, from 2014 on, they've been holding events of a very similar size and fashion without any great issues that we've been made aware of. And I've attended several of them and monitored. So, I believe it's appropriate to not require that of that permit, whereas the applicant for the Matiel is kind of taking on a new site, even though they have operated in the past. This is a new thing for them, and they have had situations in the past where there was concern amongst the commission. So, it is your prerogative, but the suggestion that staff's making is based on somewhat of the precedent of the past, if that makes sense.
Commissioner Scavdell.
Chair, I have a few questions on the-
Mike?
I have a few questions on the mitigated negative declaration. I don't know if we want to pull that up to answer those. Probably be easier if you could pull it up.
Section 2A, is that?
Um.
Do you see on that?
It is 2A, yes. If you go, first one is Section 1 Aesthetics. Right there. If you go down below to the second paragraph. Right there. Second paragraph, I think there's a typo there in that sentence, which says the project will substantially damage scenic resources. I believe that should be, the project will not substantially.
Thank you.
Good catch.
And then, if we could go to page 22, Section 6 Energy. There are a few sections where we didn't actually check the boxes, and this is one of them. So, I don't know. It was Section 6, Section 7, and Section 16. We didn't take off the level of impact. If you have that information, it'd be helpful.
Maybe since we're taking a break, I can take a look. We did upload this to the clearing house, and I'd like to see what we have on that site to make sure there's not a discrepancy between what was in your packet.
Okay. Yeah, so it's Section 6, 7, and 16. And that's all my comment.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mulder?
So, I did see the condition number 22 as far as the pond drainage. I have, like, I understand that condition's there to protect wildlife, but also, something to consider is, you know, fire hazard. And is there any way that we could extend that 30 days, or is that against fish and wildlife? I don't know. I'm just sitting there thinking, like, okay, you're trying to protect one resource, but you're getting rid of water that could put out fires. Just something to think about. I don't know if that's, I guess, technically a question if we're through the chair to staff, if we're even allowed, and after a break, that answer could happen. It doesn't matter.
I'd offer that we could probably modify that condition to give flexibility to work with CDFW and when the pond has to be dry with the intent of maintaining water for firefighting purposes as late into the season as possible.
Okay.
Thanks. Yes, Commissioner O'Neil?
So, you're increasing the attendance. It looks like between 500-
Sorry.
Between 500 and 1,000 people per event, which would be probably another couple hundred to up to 500 vehicles. And did you analyze that impact? I've never been to one of these. My husband goes, but I don't. But if you put another 1,000 people on the site with another 500 or 300 vehicles, is that capacity going to impact, I think, the experience of the attendees that, you know, could be negative? Have you evaluated that it's not going to negatively impact the festival and the environment?
Through the chair, the, part of the reason for the comfort, I think, is that the Northern Knights event magnitude has been fairly large for some time, and so, the Matiel event changes are a more dramatic change, but the Northern Knights changes have been vetted through Mendocino County, and there's been parking plans developed over the years. So, we have estimates of parking availability by the event operators that have, you know, there's a real art to how you push the vehicle.
For the previous, Ben, I'm talking about now that you-
No, and also for the ones that we have before us tonight. I think if you'd like to hear a more precise answer, I think the applicant is in the audience and can kind of speak to sort of the general capacities for the various parcels, but they have a pretty good bead on what the capacity is within the Cooks Valley property, the Countyline Ranch property, and the Cooks Valley campground property. There's numbers for each. And it does add up to the number expected. We use essentially two per vehicle as a conservative guess, yeah. And I think we could get them to answer that in a more precise way.
You don't have other areas where you shuttle people in from?
Those auxiliary areas, actually. That's what those would serve as. And I think when they get to, they've never had an event of the magnitude we're talking, but they have had upwards of 8,000 already. So, I think the 10,500, which would be the maximum under the Mendocino project that we have for Northern Knights, that would require the use of those satellite parking.
And they would be increasing their security staff and their medical staff and all that proportionately?
Yeah, that's the art of, you know, the promoter has a big job to do that we can't really get into those details. But they do have a good handle on that and can speak to kind of what the numbers they use when it comes to staffing, restrooms. There's a certain ratio to all of that.
It's been a long time since I went to concerts, but I did attend quite a few in my day, and there was some really overcrowded, you know, and medical emergencies and all kinds of things going on. And so, if you're just getting too many people packed in there, I don't know. I guess you just find out after the action report whether you blew it or not.
The reggae on the river, it has had a fairly large footprint over the years. It's had different configurations, and so, it isn't, none of the numbers we're talking about are ones that are foreign to this area. It's just not been in the last five to 10 years that it's been at that magnitude.
I was going to chime in that certainly in my memory of attending the event, whether or not it was when I was on the commission, reggae on the river was considerably bigger than either of these events are being, you know, now permitted for. So, there is a history of managing that scale of event.
I think the, sorry to interrupt. I think the best answer I could say is it's not unprecedented.
Yeah.
But it is, it is an increase, as you know.
Okay, because I was just reading the numbers you had here. The increase, increases that you were showing made it sound like the reggae on the river was 7,000? Or is that's, that's the camping currently? Okay, good. Okay, that's all I was curious about.
I think it's good to ask a couple of questions now before we take a break, and then we'll begin public comment by inviting the applicants to make a presentation, answer any questions they've heard, just as part of public comment. I do have one specific question. You mentioned that the seasonal bridge is not a part of this proposal anymore, that because French's Camp is not really being used for the event, but I believe you said it is still being used for auxiliary parking. I just wanted to be clear, is that going to require a bridge, or is it all going to be on the portion of the property that's near the highway?
Thanks. Good question. Yes, as you mentioned, and you're correct, it would be on the portions of the property that are on the west side of the South Fork of the Eel that don't require crossing of the river to get to. So, there's a field, there's two discrete areas, and I do have a slide if you'd like to see it, but it does show that.
I figured. I just wanted to make sure about that. Commissioner Scavdell?
Just one more question, and maybe the applicant can address this in their presentation, but just curious, I believe Highway 101 is still one-way controlled traffic between these two properties and entrance sites, so I don't know what the timeframe for that repair is and relationship to these events and how that traffic's going to be managed. But it seems like it might be more of a challenge for exiting the events than actually going into the events, but be interested to hear if any contact with Caltrans has been made and if anybody has, understands what that timeframe is.
Okay. Any other questions at this time for Mr. Lazar? Okay, well, it is just about 7:30, so we have folks in the audience that I know are wishing to comment, and I'm really glad you're here. But before we get to that, we're going to take a 10-minute break, and we'll reconvene at, let's say, 7:33. Okay? Thank you so much.
Recording stopped.
Come back into session. Thank you all. I believe before we give the applicants a chance to make a brief presentation at the start of public comment, staff wanted to just respond to Commissioner Scavdell's questions or comments, please. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Through the chair. We did review the environmental document. There were omissions on the checklist boxes. We reviewed the narrative portion of the document. None of those parts of the checklist, those being energy, geology, and recreation, had impacts that were considered to be significant in requiring mitigation, so they were either less than significant or not, an impact at all, based on the narrative portion of the checklist. And it is a convenience that the checklist provides those. We will review to council, but it's not essential that it be filled out. So, because we address it in the narrative, we feel comfortable that the document covered the ground that it needed to. So, you can assume that in all those categories, there was either less than a significant impact or no impact, depending on the item.
Okay, great. Okay, well, thanks again for pointing that out. Okay, as we open this item for public comment, I'd like to, as we always do, invite the applicants to come up first. I think Matiel might like to make a first presentation, and then Northern Knights will follow, and then all other public comment will follow that. So, if there is someone from the Matiel who'd like to come up, thank you. Ed.
I am very short, so we will adjust.
Oh, let me turn on your-
All right. Hello. My name's Alicia Goodrich. I'm the agent for the Matiel on this project. First, I'd like to start with the Caltrans comment. We have been in contact with Caltrans. Also, our highway contractor, CHP, we've had several meetings with them already and another one at the end of the month. They have sort of conditionally approved our permit with them, and I believe for Northern Knights as well. They have two potential traffic plans, just depending where the work is with the slide at the time of the events. So, they'll put those forward for us, I imagine, within a couple weeks of the event, and our highway contractor will know how to mitigate that issue at the time of the show. So, I think with all those agencies involved, the slide aspect, while it'll be a little bit cumbersome, I feel pretty safe that they know what they're doing and will be able to work that out just fine. I also want to address the attendance level issue in regards to the Bowman property and everything. We, this year, became apparent pretty early on that we were not going to be able to hold reggae on the river, so we did not further conversations with Bowman regarding reggae and just setting up contracts and stuff with him. We are more than aware that in order to reach that 8,000 capacity or 8,000 attendance level, we definitely need to utilize his property and have every intention to do so in the future. So, we'll begin those discussions with him by the end of the year. And it's, we've been working with Northern Knights as well, so we're pretty happy with that arrangement and looking forward to working with Mr. Bowman in the future. So, hopefully, that kind of satisfies some attendance issues. I think spreading the event out is what everybody wants to see, so that will, that will be coming down the pipeline in the future. We also are reinstuting our shuttle program, similar to what we've had in years past, and using the Southern Humboldt School District buses once again, and are happy to have them back on board to help with carpooling and taking some of those cars off-site. That'll make it a more comfortable patron experience as well. So, thank you so much for your time and for hearing us today, and we're just really excited to bring these events back to Southern Humboldt, and, you know, they provide a wealth of opportunity for income for all the businesses in the area and stuff, so we're excited to see that happen again. So, thank you so much. We're here for any questions, and thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Goodrich. Before you step down, does anyone have any questions at this time for Ms. Goodrich and the Matiel?
Do you know what the maximum attendance of the reggae on the river has ever been?
Oh, I think it was up to 20,000 at one point. Big, big, big show. And I'd love to invite you out, Peggy, if you'd like to come out and enjoy some summer arts time. We'd love to have you.
I'll send my husband. Stay out of the sun.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And Mr. Hueson, would you like to present on behalf of Northern Knights?
I did this wrong for the last time, so I'm going to get it up here.
We need to, yeah, we need to boost that whole podium for you.
No, it's fine. Thank you for everybody's time today. My name is Dr. Peter Hueson. I'm one of the directors of Northern Knights. We're grateful to be here today to have the opportunity to continue producing Northern Knights, as well as be part of the team here today, working towards a continued growth of events and tourism in Cooks Valley, Piracy Junction, Southern Humboldt, and Humboldt as a whole. We've learned a lot after 10 years of events in the region that straddles two counties, especially at a venue with such deep history. At the very core, all the stakeholders of the entitlements being discussed here tonight are coming from a good place, to continue to provide a space for people to come together and celebrate life. This is a big responsibility, and we don't take it lightly. As you are aware, the checklist of conditions continues to grow in both counties, and it really does take a village. It's taken time and patience, but the Matiel, the Bowman's, Countyline Ranch, and Northern Knights have found alignment in how we can all work together to take care of this venue and its surroundings so that these events can continue for years to come. I want to thank staff for the thoughtful approach to the project. What's being presented today is practical, ensures the entitlements are conditioned appropriately, and we are confident in the ability of this group to succeed in the execution of the required mitigations, as well as the management of the events as a whole. a whole. We are committed to ensuring these events in Cooks Valley are run professionally, and that includes troubleshooting the curveballs that come with festival production. I cannot stand here and say everything will be executed perfectly during every event, every year, but I can say with confidence that we, Northern Knights, the Matil, Cooks Valley, County Line Ranch, and the community around us that actually make these events possible, have the credentials, drive, and resources to address issues that present themselves, document those issues, and continue to improve year after year. For a couple of the specifics that were brought up today, I wanted to, specifically on the parking, one of the reasons we're asking for the additional parking lots is for those considerations. Both the fortune and unfortunate of being along in the South Fork of the Eel is you somewhat get a new venue every year that we have to take into account space and time, and so we've really done a good analysis. In this day and age, with the amount of drone footage that we have, we're continuing to nerd out on how we can use technology to continue to maximize space, but we're very confident in the levels that were set, and that we can execute on those, and that we have, in the event, for whatever reason we don't, that we have these auxiliary parking lots to make sure that that's the case. And you brought up two points, which I appreciated, not just the parking and the regulatory side, but actually from an attendee standpoint. Jamed has been our medical team for the last few years for both events. We bring in licensed bonded security folks, and we take extraordinary time and effort in ensuring the safety and the security of our attendees. It sometimes keeps me up at night, but at the end of the day, we've got a phenomenal team that knows this venue. I do have my EMS, emergency services coordinator here, if you'd like to hear from her, but at the same time, I want to give her a break to say that they're very good at what they do. Being on the county line, communicating with Howard Forest and Fortuna EMS, one of the big things that we really take care to is to make sure that the communication is good enough that you're not drawing resources from both counties, because they both think that something's happening, which could affect the rest of both counties. So just fundamentally, the amount of time on our critical incident team, the amount of effort and kind of almost annoying the agencies with the amount of effort, kind of communication that we try to provide them, I think we feel very confident in kind of the programs that we've set up and the team that we have around us to execute these in a safe and responsible manner. I echo what Alicia said in terms of Caltrans and what's happening with the slide. Both Caltrans, CHP, Granite, and everybody's there, they've issued, said, "We have everything we need from you guys. Hold tight. We'll let you know where we are in the process, and then we'll go ahead and adjust any of the encroachment and any of the things you need to see on the highway." Other than that, I, after, you know, 10 years, being able to be back here and, and continue to do this event, we're grateful for it. We've got our work cut out for us, but there is a very strong team and community behind making these things successful, so appreciate you guys for your consideration today, and thank you.
Thanks. Any questions at this time for Dr. Hueson? Okay, thank you so much, and we'll, we'll call you back up if we need to later. At this time, I would like to open it up for wider public comment. I'll start with those in the room here tonight. If you would like to comment on either of these events, please approach the podium or raise your hand. Let me know. Yes? And?
Thank you. I'm Keith Bowman, owner of Cooks Valley.
Yes.
Been associated with the concert since the very first one that Reggae put on, yours or Matil. Well, thanks, Steve, for the work he's been putting in with us as a neighbor to County Line. He's spent hours and hours of time with his kind to get everything together. We haven't got everything together, but we're working on it. Cooks Valley, our group, Northern Knights, is in full support of the Matil and their endeavor to put their new event on and the arts festival. It is very important to our community and what we want to do for the long term. We have a record going for Cooks Valley going back 10 years, and we've been very successful in running and building from the ground up a very small concert, 1,000, 1,500, up to our 10,000 or 8,000-person event that we're doing now. And by doing that, we've learned through the years, step by step by step, agency by agency, and every rule that we could possibly come up across, and are getting more. But we are accomplishing that, and, and what we've got going on now is the Arts Festival coming in, which we've dealt with before. We've did events for the Matil and their concerts, and we've had ups and downs and back and forth. They are a new group coming in, and the thing I'm asking for from the Matil is to, to spend much time with Northern Knights and myself, as we have been originators, or not the originators, but the people that are trying to build this to a big level where everybody does well and prosts ourselves. In doing that, we have to be very conscious about doing something and getting it done and doing it right, and not shining on me or anybody else in Southern Humboldt or you people. It has to be done correctly. So in the past, the records show what we can do and they can do, and they're, they're a very good group of people that are ready to start working towards our goals, which is a community thing there. So in saying, there, there's lots of little conditions that I'm hoping that we don't have to bring up here. You can ask if you'd like, but, but it's important that Matil steps up to the plate with me and the owners of our properties right there, and we can take care of these conditions on our own. I don't really want to plague them with something that they need at this point. They need support and help, and, and that's where I'm about. So I want to thank you guys, thank the Matil, and pray for prosperity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Okay. Do we have other members of the audience who wish to comment? Yes, come on up. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Adam Kleis. We, I represent the owners of the other property, County Line Ranch.
Okay.
And I figure since I'm here, might as well just go ahead and pitch in that, you know, we, I, I understand the concerns about the, you know, increase in capacity. One thing I'd like to say is we've been spending the last, since COVID, really decompressing the inside of our perimeter. So while the area hasn't changed, the amount of space inside of it has. We inherited the property after it had been in foreclosure, or I shouldn't say inherited, we bought it from a bank after it had been in foreclosure. There were lots of areas filled with junk, abandoned cars, all sorts of things, and we got rid of a lot of it between 2020 and the last event. And actually, we have opportunities to do more, which we're taking advantage of now. So we, our goal is to increase the comfort of the attendees, and at the present level, we think we'll be able to do that. So the other thing is, we also, when we had to confront the new sequence requirements for VMT, we looked at what's possible with a rural destination that's essentially, you know, it's a recreational activity. So I actually looked into and did a lot of research on other event venues. This is a common economic activity in rural California that have music festivals, and, you know, it's an interesting thing to do. The weather and the environment has a big impact. This year, the win, the winter took some of the event centers offline as they do repairs and stuff. So I think all of these, this whole industry and entertainment in general serves a cultural purpose and increases the, you know, enhances our experience of being in the community. So while we can't justify and eliminate every vehicle mile traveled, we do think that there are, you know, reasons why such a thing should still be allowed today. And sure enough, we would like to encourage conversion to electric vehicles and all the other things that we can find ways to incentivize and disincentivize, like, single occupancy vehicles. I mean, that'll be an expensive permit to get and probably capped. And it also gives us an opportunity to go after things like generators by having a requirement to have a permit, whereas at most events, nobody's even paying attention to them. So we'll be ahead of the curve in some areas, and part of it is it's, this area demands it, and we're proud to kind of step up and lead, because after looking at what the other event centers are doing, you know, we're, we're ahead of them. So anyway, I just thank you all for your consideration, your time. Steve, you've done an excellent job of bridging lots of different concerns, and I really appreciate your presentation. Thank you.
Can I just ask a quick follow-up, and I don't know if any other commissioners, but just to clarify a point that I think I heard you say. So there's a, you charge a different parking permit amount for a single occupancy car?
Those are the tools within our toolbox that we've come up with, in terms of how we can influence and reduce, you know, the, basically increase density per vehicle.
Right.
You know, and eventually, we want to have buses from major markets, right? This is, as Steve mentioned, that these are things that we can roll out over the course of this five-year permit and, and see what works. Dr. Hueson is very good at collecting data.
Great, thank you. Any other questions at this time? No, okay. All right, well, please, anyone else in the audience, we welcome your, your comment. Yeah, well.
Good evening. My name is Pleasure Strange. I am currently the president of Matil Community Center. I'd like to thank you all for being here. Thank you, Steve Lazar, Alicia Goodrich, Adam Kleis, Peter Bowman, for everybody for speaking. I know that some people are new to, obviously, you were talking about, you're not sure about what we've done in the past, and I just wanted to make it very clear and aware that we are seeking the CUP in a new space, but however, we have held Summer Arts and Music Festival for 45 years in Southern Humboldt County, and had a very good showing and a very, what would I say, a very good outcome every year, and we did put on Reggae on the River for 30 years, which was a very large-scale event, and we are very capable as well. And I just wanted to make sure that we were all aware that we know how to do this too, and we're so grateful to have the opportunity to work with all these people this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Others in the room wishing to comment before I go to Zoom? Okay, then I will switch to the Zoom audience, and I do see a hand up there, public 745 for, it's your three minutes.
Hello, can you hear me, Noah?
Yes, Kent, I can. Thank you.
Yes, well, I want to apologize. I was, I was busy on national, international affairs, and I couldn't attend your meeting. Trying to get rid of Mr. Putin in Russia right now, so that's what I do. But anyway, I wish to comment on this particular project. I'm not speaking for Mother Nature, but I can think for Mother Nature. We are the only invasive species on the planet, and would she approve of this particular project? I'm not going to speak for her, but I do have some serious concerns on things of this nature. A prior speaker said at one time, you had 20,000 people attending this event. I, I'm not aware of a, a permit for that, so I do, maybe, maybe that was an incorrect number, and, and I have tracked this for many years. As, as you all know, I've been involved in the planning process for many years here. And I, I, I forgot to mention, you're, when you were on recess there, you were totally open, open mic, and yes, the weather you're getting now, I did send up before I came back from Pino, Mexico, so you're benefiting from the same weather. So anyway, I did, did, would get, if this project should go through, what the people to understand. I really appreciate the last comment from the last speaker. I would like to see a condition here that there were, were no cars at all coming in here, and it was nothing but electric buses bringing people in from wherever they want to come, you know, if they want to come out of San Francisco, Los Angeles, San Francisco. They should all be coming up on electric buses here, and you should not need additional parking. You probably won't put a condition on here of that nature, and I can understand you want to have it. The biggest thing I said, if this is going to happen, you know, over potentially Mother Nature's objection, that, that you basically go ahead and, the beneficiaries of this are the, are, are the Matil. And I, they've done wonderful work. They're no longer have any funding, because of course, as we all aware, the cannabis or weed business is pretty well gone away, and I, I really appreciate the fact that they would be total beneficiaries, so they can do their wonderful work down there, does not be sent out to some secondary major company who wants to make it a production, and they get a small share. So if, if you are going to move forward with this, which I'm sure you will, that's some of my comments, and it is imperative that you don't have some big corporation come in and putting these events together, and they take the profits and leave us with next to nothing. So I do support the Matil and their wonderful work, and I, I, I hopefully, that anybody involved in these things will make sure the money stays locally, and, and, and we, and we respect the environment. Right? Talking to John Ford earlier, appears the, the smaller generators are going away. I'm happy with that. Hopefully, the water used for this bed is not being pulled out of some of Mother Nature's premium print areas.
Need to wrap it up, Kent, please.
Thank you. Thank you very much for my time to speak. Thank you, Noah.
Thank you so much, Mr. Swatzky. I do see one other hand up on Zoom. That's Edward Vois. Go ahead, sir, it's your three minutes. Mr. Vois? We can't hear you.
Is that, is that good?
Oh, yes. Now we're hearing you, yes.
Yeah, yeah, you have to do the old unmute.
Right.
You've already got my comments. I don't want to waste any more of your time going over them. I do have a question, though, that I overlooked before, which was on the staff report, page three. You've got a table that shows the events, the days, the camping, the attendance, and vehicles, and I wanted to know if, since there's no other information, does that also include security personnel, medical staff, vendors, and volunteers, entertainers? Or is that just for the attendance, people buying tickets, camping, and parking their vehicles? So I'm a little, I'm a little bit concerned that if it's only for attendance, camping, and vehicles, what is the total amount of security, medical staff, vendors, volunteers, and entertainers that would add to those numbers, and would they add to camping or vehicles? I'm, I'm, I'm opposed to this event only because it doesn't benefit the river. It doesn't benefit the wildlife, and I really struggle to try to figure out a way, and there, and I can't find one, and so that's why I'm objecting to it. I wish there was a way to do something like this that wasn't on the river or in an area that has a lot of wildlife, but for some reason, the river draws everyone, for good reasons or bad reasons, and I just would like to see there be events like this without it having to be done through a laser show or a light show or something that affects, because you're looking, you're looking at 2,400, 24,500 campers, 28,000 attendees, 1,300, 500 vehicles at the venue site. That's, that's over 11 or 12 days between May and October. So, yeah, it's, it's taking a little bit of a toll on the indigenous species that live and thrive in that area, and I don't know what I would do if I was them, but I sure the hell wouldn't be around. So anyway, thank you very much for letting me speak, and enjoy the rest of your night.
Well, thank you, sir, and, and thank you for taking the time to write the detailed letter that you did. We appreciate it. Okay, before I close public comment, just want to make sure there's no other person on Zoom wishing to comment here. I don't see any other hands up. Don't see any other hands in the room, so I'm going to close the public comment part of this hearing. Bring it back to the commission. Certainly. Okay, I guess that is still part of public comment. I, I would, in fact, it is our, our protocol to invite the applicant or owner, if they wished to get up and make any additional comments responding to other comments they've heard, you don't have to, and we can still call you back up if we have any questions for you, but... Nope, not at this time. Okay. All right, Mr. Bowman, sure.
Yeah, on the last, on the last comment from Mr. Vois, and I know him, the wildlife in our area and, and the nature of the river, the forest and everything, I lived there on quite a bit of land in that area. We are very good. We are very good at taking care of the animals. We have geese that we never had before. We have mallard ducks, which I raised about 500 a year. There's, not now, but I did in the past. So our wildlife thing, our fish, my two creeks that run through my property, they have dropped down, and we don't allow any logging anything in the creeks. I mean, they're pristine, and they've dropped six feet of overburden off the rocks this last year because of the weather, and the creeks are just, no fishing game up them, but we actually have two creeks in Southern Humboldt that produce fish. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Okay, yes, and one follow-up from the County Line Ranch owner.
Thank you. Just to add some, I do appreciate Ed's input pushes us to be better, and would just like to, you know, Steve had a slide that showed logging and stuff. There was a mine operating when we got the property. They had a permit to make asphalt and extract quite a bit of gravel, which required a lot of trucks, and the operator also would use it as kind of a place to throw stuff if they needed to. If there was a slide that blocks 101 nearby, well, that stuff would show up in our lot. And they operated six, seven days a week. And so we did terminate the lease, we're in the middle of finishing the reclamation on the Mendocino side, which will leave it as a parking lot, which is used in this event. And so I just wanted, like to just say that that has reduced, I think, the ambient environmental footprint of human beings dramatically, and certainly for the neighborhood, the steady stream of heavy trucks is gone. So we would trade that for 11 days anytime, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And with that, I will close public comment. Again, if the commission needs to call the applicants up for a question, we can, we may do that, but I'll bring it back to you guys for further deliberation. Yes, Commissioner O'Neill?
Could someone answer the question that was asked about the staffing and if that increases the parking and the capacity? Do you have an estimate on that?
Right, whether that table does include staff and others or just attendees is a good question. I'll put that to you, Mr. Lazar, if you are able to answer that.
Yes, we believe it's a reflection of both event, attendees, and staffing. That's the expectation, and it's numbers that we use from the applicant's request.
Total combined humans and cars is what those numbers?
Well, just with respect to attendance.
Okay.
Vehicles, I think, is pretty straightforward. They're not, well, you're right, sorry, it's not straightforward. So, yes, the cars are all cars, not just attendance of the event. And the attendance is all attendees, not just people paying, but people working the event.
No further questions. I just, I'd like to commend staff for the level of effort that we put into this, and the applicant for their presentations and reports as well, and their acknowledgement of the number of conditions that are placed on the project.
Right.
And, and their intentions with respect to those is really appreciated, and look forward to them hopefully having a very successful event.
Yeah, I will echo that. I've been watching these events and sometimes attending them for a very long time. They are well-run, but I think they have, in fact, continually taken feedback, looked for places to improve their operations, and have done so very consistently. And it's, it's particularly good to see the two event promoters, the Matil and Northern Knights, working together, cooperating on this project with the Bowman's, the other owners, so it's particularly nice to see how collaborative the whole undertaking has become at this point. Further questions? Do we want to move forward with the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that we adopt the resolution contained in attachment two, including all the finding and adoptions listed in page two of the staff report, that we adopt the resolution in attachment three, including accepting the post-event report, the required findings, renewing the permit through 2027, and approves the modified CUP subject to the recommended conditions of approval, and that we adopt the resolution contained in attachment four, which accepts the post-event report, finds the requested modification complies with the general plan and zoning ordinance, renews the permit through 2027, and approve the modifications to the conditional use permit subject to the recommended conditions of approval.
I had second thought, but I'd like to just ask if we'd be willing to amend condition number 22, which would give discretion with the county to work with, directly with CDFW to potentially leave that pond full until a later date, depending on, for fire protection.
I will amend my motion as such.
Thanks. And I just want to make sure that your motion captured all three resolutions?
It did.
Okay, thought so. Yeah. We have a motion, and was that a second? With one condition? Okay. And can we, is there any further discussion on the motion before we vote? Okay, then let's have one more roll call vote on this motion.
Commissioner, Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Mulder?
Yes.
Commissioner Scabdal?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. These projects are approved. Thank you all for the hard work that you put into getting it to this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, let's see. As the, as the director noted, we do not have item H, planning commission procedures, but we do have item I, which is report from planner, if the director would like to provide any updates.
I really do not have any updates this evening. I don't think there's been anything of consequence at the board for the, relative to the commission's work, so...
Okay. Thank you.
How, how packed is the agenda for June 1st?
It's, it's full, it's not packed.
Okay, thank you.
And then I will also say we're planning on canceling the June 15th meeting.
Okay. Good to know.
Didn't we continue several items to that meeting?
That was to Ju, July 20th.
July 20th, okay, thanks.
Okay, so as of this time, we're just planning to have that first meeting in June?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for the director?
I don't know, I just wanted to note through the chair, the staff, as a cannabis cultivator or whatever, the county did just send out that email, mass email, reminding everyone about dark sky regulations, so I think that was a good positive thing, just to put, every single applicant is what the email said, so...
Sure, great. Well, and we'll just consider that planning commission discussion items, which is the last item. Anyone else have any items you wanted to bring up? Commissioners?
I do.
Yes, Commissioner Scabdal?
I just like to talk a little bit about the setbacks from public lands. It seems like we're frequently asked to approve a reduction in the setback from public land, and, you know, obviously, there are a lot of public lands in Humboldt County, and a lot of them are very remote and rural, and so what we're doing is we're finding that, one, maybe the setback is too large, 600 feet. Two, there's not a lot of activity on a lot of these public lands that would be impacted. So I guess my question is, should we amend that requirement in the environmental document to make allowances for that, or are we just going to continue to make exception to the criteria as we go forward?
So I would like to re-characterize the question if I could. It's not really make an exception, it's that when you're within 600 feet above the plants, there's added discretion. So if you're outside of 600 feet, there is no permit requirement. If you're within 600 feet, there is a permit requirement. It's not a variance, it's a special permit, which adds a layer of discretion to the permit. And really, what that's looking for is, are there public uses that the cannabis cultivation site would perhaps adversely affect? And then secondarily, are there natural resource issues there, habitat issues there that need to be protected or taken into consideration?
So maybe it's semantics or wording issue, but the way I, the way I'm understanding it every time they appear, is that, you know, we're approving some sort of exception to the base environmental document, so...
Well, it's, it's, it's not really, I guess it is an assumption within the mitigated negative declaration for the CMM L U O, and that was carried forth into the CCL U O. But it's really not an exception, it is just to allow cultivation within 600 feet.
And the public agencies can speak up and say they're against it, and we can take that into consideration, but for the most part, they haven't. I think maybe early on, there was a couple that were opposed, but for the, it doesn't seem like they have been opposed recently.
Yeah, I think there's times when the agencies do speak up, BLM in particular has spoken up on a couple of projects that were down near Honeydew, and, and sometimes the state park will speak up, and there were some actually zoning, what would have been zoning clearance certificates, but needed special permits just due to the proximity to the park there, and spotted all habitat, and so those cultivation sites were moved further away.
So, okay, so again, kind of back to my own words then, is what I understand you're saying is that when we're within 600 feet or less of public lands, we're actually subjecting the review to an additional level of scrutiny with respect to wildlife or other impacts it might have on the use of that public property?
I think that, that would be the understanding that...
Okay. Okay.
And that mechanism was, was basically laid out by the ordinance language itself, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. It's a good question.
Yeah.
Sure. Anything else? Okay, then I guess we will adjourn. Thank you all very much, and we'll see you on June 1st.